Good evening, and thank you for joining us as we get ready to broadcast the fourth and final debate in the race for Seattle City Council. I'm Brian Jackson. Tonight's debates topics will cover wide-ranging topics from gun violence to policing, homelessness, and affordable housing. And there are two candidates vying for the District 5 council seat that will be vacated by Councilmember Deborah Juarez. The candidates are Cristiana Obi Sumner and Kathy Moore. Cristiana is the CEO of a social equity consulting firm and co-chair the Seattle Disability Rights Commission. They were motivated to run by the housing affordability crisis in Seattle. Kathy is a retired King County Superior Court Judge, started her career as a public defender, and also chaired the Seattle Human Rights Commission. She says she was motivated to run over public safety concerns. District 5 covers Greenwood, Northgate, Lake City, Pinehurst, and Bitter Lake. Don't forget, if you miss any of these debates, you can find them on the Fox Local Connect TV app. And now here are the moderators for the District 5's debate tonight, including Fox 13's John Hopperstad. And from the Roy Flores Wellness Center at North Seattle College, good evening and welcome, and thanks for being with us tonight. I'm John Hopperstad from Fox 13, coming to you live for the District 5 Seattle City Council Debate.
And I'm Jake Wittenberg with King 5.
And good evening, I'm Angela King with KUOW 94.9 FM Seattle. This debate is brought to you by Seattle City Club. Our City Club is dedicated to improving the civic health of our region by fostering a dialogue and providing access to our higher leaders, highest leaders, I should say. And a big thanks going out this evening to our sponsors for making tonight possible: Comcast, GSBA, Puget Sound Energy, the Henry M. Jackson Foundation, and the Seattle Colleges are host. Also, thanks to our media partners and our production partner as well, PNTA. And of course, thank you to our live audience here at North Seattle College.
Our lovely audience has agreed to continue the evening without comment, no boos, no cheers, we'll hold that until the end. But you can join the conversation online. Join us live on whichever social media platform you prefer. We ask that you use the hashtag SEALEX. Now let's meet our candidates tonight, Cristiana Obi Sumner and Kathy Moore. You can applaud on this one. Get it all out of your system tonight.
And here is the format for tonight's debate. Each candidate is going to have 90 seconds for an opening statement. Candidates will then have one minute to respond to initial questions. Our panel will then lead a follow-up discussion on that topic before moving on. So let's get started here. We flipped a coin before the debate begins. Kathy Moore will have the first opening statement. Kathy?
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. My name's Kathy Moore, and I'm running for Seattle City Council in District 5. I've lived in Seattle most of my life. My mother and I moved here when I was four. My husband and I have raised three children here and also started a small business. I've started my career as a public defender, working in the criminal legal system, the behavioral health system, the child welfare system. I also served as a King County Superior Court Judge, where I continued to work in those systems. I also served as the interim Seattle City Clerk, where I managed a budget of $3 million and 30-plus employees, and also reported to all nine council members and was intimately involved in passing legislation during that. I got into this race because I care very deeply about the city, and I feel that we need to have good governance, we need to have sound leadership, and we need to have a council that's willing to collaborate with our mayor and with one another. I have been endorsed by Mayor Harrell, by Dow Constantine, by the firefighters, a number of entities out there who have all worked with me in the past and know that I am somebody that can get things done and will work cooperatively with them. And I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
And Cristiana?
I came to Seattle in 2010 when I got a scholarship to Seattle University. This is the seventh state I've lived in, but I've been civically engaged my entire life. I started my career here as a direct social service worker, where I saw that the systems and the policies were what was creating barriers for my clients. As co-chair Seattle Disabilities Commission, I worked to pass or helped pass one of the nation's first bans on subminimum wage, which led me to continue that work to Harborview, where I worked at this Advent and Coordinated Entry, and from there, starting my own small business. Where we've worked with over 250 businesses, governments, and organizations across the country, where I continue to see that it's policy and structures that is the biggest barrier for progress and change. But I have a track record of success with those 250 businesses, and I believe I can bring that to City Council as well. I would love to come and speak to policies, just taking both, all of the knowledge of that, of the policy process, the policy strategy, and bringing the grounded experience and reality of the, of people here in Seattle, in District 5, of folks who are renters, of folks who are disabled like myself. I have also been endorsed by Senator Noel Frame, Senator Rebecca Saldana, Representative Farivar, Planned Parenthood, the 36 and 46 and county Democrats, and I look forward to talking to you today.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you. And let's get to our first question here, and it's kind of an all-around question about Seattle. We love living in Seattle, there's a lot of great things to love about the city, but right now, there are things to be concerned about as well. We have open-air drug markets, we have home invasions, unaffordable rents for many. So my question to you, is Seattle in crisis? And what would be your first proposal as a City Council to make the city and District 5 a better place to live? Cristiana, we'll go first with you.
To be completely honest, after 2020, our nation is in crisis, our world is in crisis. I think that there's a lot going on in our district that we actually can address and perhaps even be a model towards how we can perhaps move forward as humans. I mean, in a state where we have climate disaster, where we have an economic crisis, we have so many different sort of things that we need to address. What I think is really important here at Seattle, and is why I am so passionate about running for office and have been asked to run for office, is that we really do need to make sure that we have policy solutions and investments that's going to get to the taproot of the issue, that's going to have multiple pathways towards shared goals where everyone can come into coalition and community and find that solution, and that we can actually achieve those goals in a way that is going to be sustainable, effective, and be able to perhaps bring a little bit of hope back to our city.
Is there a policy, though, or a proposal that you would want to introduce on day one as a City Council member that you think would make the lives of people better?
I would love to start in-house, of course, consultant, right? And so I would love to work with Councilmember Tammy Morales's office to continue working towards making the RACs and Social Justice Initiative an ordinance. I also want to make sure that the tree ordinance is paused, so we can actually work towards a Green New Deal, and that I'm able to see what's going on with the social housing PDA and what the funding is going to look like for that, because I think that's going to help with a lot of the root causes we have.
Okay. Kathy, the same question to you, is Seattle in crisis, and what would you do on day one to make it a better place?
Yes, I do think Seattle's in crisis. I think we've been in crisis for a period of time, and I think you see that that's part of the reason that there's such high turnover at the council and so many people that are running. I think the public has been very clear about what the priorities are. They've told us their priorities from day one are public safety, dealing with homelessness, housing affordability, and also climate. So the very first thing that I would do if elected to council is continue to work with our police department to figure out how, in fact, we can recruit more officers. We have the money there, but unfortunately, our recruitment efforts have not been terribly effective. And so I think we need to be reaching out to the SPD and asking them, what can we do to get more officers? Because that's the first step towards moving towards public safety. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that our third Public Safety Department, the Alternative Civilian Responder Program, is also robust. We don't actually have enough behavioral health workers, we don't have enough social workers, it's a pipeline issue. So also reaching out to them and finding out ways that the City Council can support them.
Another issue that's a big concern for a lot of folks in this room as well, gun violence in Seattle at an all-time high last year. In fact, homicide numbers are the highest we've seen in 30 years in the city of Seattle. So we want to get into public safety here, and Jake has more on that.
Sure. Thank you, John. A lot of the violent crime we've seen are among juveniles, teenagers in District 5. It was almost one year ago at Ingram High School when a 17-year-old boy was murdered by a 14-year-old boy here in the district. The state lawmakers have floated the idea of a potential task force to try to get to the bottom of this. Kathy, we'll start with you on this question. Would that be enough, and what would you do to commit to protecting kids and preventing more youth crime?
Yes, I do think we absolutely need to have a state task force. Gun violence is epidemic across our nation, and not just our city, but we also really seeing an uptick in our city. I think the absolute most important thing that we need to do is to invest in the mental health of our youth. A lot of what happened at Ingram was because of people not having sufficient support services, not having sufficient access to mental health. We know that our youth, since the COVID, are absolutely struggling. Council President Juarez was one of the people to move much more funding forward, but we still don't have enough funding. We also need to be looking at how do we deal with illegal, we need to increase our police staff so that they can get illegal guns off the street. We need to do a better job of keeping track of illegal guns. Also, when I served as a King County Superior Court Judge, one of the things I did was enter extreme risk protection orders, where we were able to take guns away from people who were in behavioral health crisis.
You're a former prosecutor, a quick follow-up for you, would you support prosecuting parents in relation to these youth crimes?
Actually, I was a former public defender, so would I support prosecuting parents? I think it would depend on the circumstance. I know we had a parent prosecuted in the past. I tend to think it's better to be proactive and look at ways that we can educate parents. We need to provide gun locks, gun safes, that's something that the council can do. We can work with every town for safety. Gun Alliance and Moms Demand Action for more education.
And thank you for the correction there, I appreciate that, I misspoke. Cristiana, and your thoughts on youth crime and what you would do on day one?
Yeah, one of the things that is really interesting, people may have heard that I've been looking to Camden, New Jersey, as a model for how we can both increase community safety and increase alternative community supports. So definitely for community violence intervention programs, I think is really important for a couple of reasons. Number one, what we know, for whatever reason it is, youth are perhaps going to have a different opinion or way that they show up if a police officer comes to them, but they might actually take the treatment or the intervention if it's someone else that seems more like a community member, so to speak. Growing up in Camden County, New Jersey, I also know that youth go into crime and gangs when they have a, an environment where they are low income, they have economic issues, they have housing instability. And so we really do need to make sure that we're addressing those root causes, so that we can have at least that stability for our youth, and maybe that can help.
But you mentioned it is a, it is a potential gang issue, yet partially the gang unit needs more officers. You've been opposed to increasing the number of officers. Wouldn't that have an impact on the ability to prevent youth crime?
Well, the thing about with the Camden, New Jersey model is when they, they sort of rebuilt the police department from scratch and made them county workers as opposed to a former police department, which did lead to an increase of officers, and the officers was having a different approach. It was more community policing that would be able to really get to the heart of the issue, as opposed to feeling punitive, it felt more familial. And so I think that, you know, we need to really look at not just sort of how do we address the issue, but the humans at the center of it and what's going to lead to that.
We were talking about earlier the police, the need for more police, and the mayor has proposed 1,400 police officers, and I believe, Kathy, you support that. But Cristiana, you do not. Can you explain what you would like to see happen instead of that? And does that make Seattle streets safer by not having as many police officers on the force?
Yeah, I mean, if you read the Police Enforcement Research Foundation's report across from 2016 to 2020, or 2023 now, you'll see that they say that the recruitment issue has been going on for almost a decade now. And a lot of the interventions that we have are not working. I do feel like we need to make sure that our police are available for those Priority One calls, and then see if we could take that bandwidth off of them with these alternative services, so that we can have a both-and.
Kathy?
No, it doesn't make our streets safer, we need more police. You know, the, yes, our police are stressed, they're having a difficult time, but they've been very clear with us about what they need. And the number-one request that we've had from the police is give us more staff, so we're not having to pull detectives off their jobs being detectives. We're not having to take people out of the gun, gun violence prevention unit. So I think we need to listen to the police when they tell us exactly what it is they need.
I'd like to ask a question in regards to public safety before we move on to a new topic, and that includes response times. The north portion of Seattle has some of the longest police response times. District 5, if you have a nonviolent crime, you may not see an officer until tomorrow. Cristiana, we'll start with you to pick this up on this topic. What is it you can do to help with response times, given what you said about the police recruiting issue?
Yeah, so what I, what we also have seen in the empirical research right now is that having more police officers but continuing to put additional purview on top of their bandwidth is not going to reduce those response times. So if we need Priority One response, let's have that. But some studies have shown here in Seattle that 40% to 60% of calls doesn't have to be responded to fully, so we can alleviate that burden, we can actually perhaps have a more, you know, a more, quicker response.
Kathy?
Again, my, Cristiana and I disagree here. My position is that even if we have the alternative civilian responders, and we absolutely do need to have them, that doesn't give, create enough bandwidth for officers to continue to deal with the Priority One crimes. That's not going to make that go away. The only thing that's going to help with that is getting more actual police officers who can deal with crime and progress. We can also look at utilizing community service officers as another alternative.
All right, we want to kind of move to a similar topic here, police accountability, and Angela's got more on that.
Despite offering hiring bonuses, and Kathy, this is something you mentioned, the SPD is still dealing with staffing shortages. And you could argue that's because other cities are offering better wages, but some say the Seattle City Council is to blame for the current tension that is causing the potential candidates to look elsewhere for jobs in policing. So, and if you really consider what happened in light of what happened to the previous Police Department Chief, Carmen Best, back in 2020, there was a very fraught relationship between the leadership and the council. So do you agree that the City Council is partially responsible for what's going on when it comes to staffing at the SPD? Kathy, I'll begin with you.
Yes, I do actually agree that the City Council is partially responsible for that. I think that during the defund movement, that many people in the police department felt unsupported and decided to move on. And I don't think that we have reached a point where we have come to, come to trust one another, come to see one another as being in partnership. Now, part of that means that we need to do a better job of creating a robust accountability structure, because we cannot really ask the council to change the dial on the dialogue until we know that we are going to have police officers who are professional, and if they are not professional or they're engaged in unconstitutional policing, that there is going to be, they are going to be held accountable and, and very much aware of that fact. So we need to be able to shift the dialogue, but we need to have some pieces in place before we can do that effectively.
Cristiana, same question to you. Certainly, is the Seattle City Council partially to blame for what we're seeing right now when it comes to concerns surrounding the SPD, specifically around staffing?
Yeah, so again, referring to the Police Enforcement Research Foundation's sort of biannual reports, they said that this is actually an issue across the country. Across the country, the bonuses do not work. Across the country, folks have felt slighted, starting with Ferguson, Missouri. Sure, there could, there's, there's definitely some, some tension going on, there's definitely some fighting. But I do think that what's important is to look at the longitudinal data across the country. But also, I would say the number-one thing I've heard from constituents that they're really looking for is a City Council who's willing to actually focus on the goals and not get stuck in sort of minutia or fighting that sort of gets folks off that plan. And that's also going to go for police and other departments as well to move towards those shared goals.
So a follow-up question on that front. How would you steer clear of the minutia?
Well, like I said, a social equity consultant, right? And I've had to work 40 hours a week even through this campaign as a working-class person. It's literally what I do, in organizational development, and I've done it successfully. It's what people hire me to do. And so when I go into City Council, I'm, I'm looking to see if the tool kit of success I've used and other organizations and municipalities would work in Seattle, especially since it's my home. I believe that I'm confident that I can do so.
I'll hand it back over to John.
One of the controversies around police accountability, as you know, is that footage that recently came out, that body camera footage of a Seattle Police Officer leader, an Officers Guild leader laughing and joking in the wake of a fatal officer-involved collision. We had another Seattle Police Officer under fire, this time for alleged racist comments he made off duty. Now, I've actually got a question from the audience based on that. The two officers involved in that phone call, on that video, were Seattle Police Guild President Mike Solan and Vice President Daniel Autorer. In light of that video, should the city be negotiating the next police contract with them? Kathy, we'll ask you first.
Well, excuse me. I think that's a very difficult question, because they are a union, they have the right as a union to choose their leadership, the membership has chosen their leadership. What I think the council does need to look at, though, is that the union president is on the city budget, the, with City Council pays part of the salary of the president. And I do not think that that is appropriate. That's the only union in which the city pays for their salary. So particularly in light of what has happened and the ongoing controversies that we are having, I think that that's a place that we should begin to look.
Okay. Cristiana?
I, like most of you, grew up in a society where the police were supposed to be the good guys with the badge. You know, I had DARE in my school when we had that. And when I think about police, I think about people who respect everyone and don't see someone, whatever their age is, to be literally 10% of the area median wage here in Seattle. Any organization, any department, any professional space needs to have accountability. And I believe that if we do not hold police accountable to fulfilling their civic duty of protecting and respecting us, I think that there needs to be recourse for that.
John, I can, yeah, I'll ask a follow-up with that if I can. Would you vote for a police contract that does not include additional accountability measures in it?
Absolutely not. I think that what's, whether we had 2020 happen or not, I think what, what's, what we have here to show even before 2020 is that there is something going on with the Seattle Police Department in terms of their, whether it's culture, whether it's temperament, whatever that is. I would really love to see if we could work with them to, in the ways that they did in Camden, New Jersey, see if they can actually build trust and rapport with the community, but there's going to have to be some work, and until then, we need to put those measures in place.
Thank you. Kathy, I'd like to ask you the same question. Would you at any point support a new police contract without this measure of accountability in it?
Oh, absolutely not. That is the bottom line. We have to have the accountability provisions in place. In fact, the council in 2017 passed a very robust accountability ordinance. Unfortunately, it was bargained away. Those provisions are now in the SBMA contract. I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be in the patrol contract. Additionally, my, in answer to your question, the last question, if we don't negotiate with the current leadership, we're not going to get a contract that has accountability provisions in it.
Okay, let's turn to the fentanyl crisis, because Seattle's facing a grim reality there, and District 5 is as well. We are on pace for record drug fatalities in the city as well as King County. So Seattle's Fire Chief actually says treatment options are lacking right now for folks who are addicted. Would you support the city investing in private treatment? And remember, we're facing about a $200 million deficit in the budget coming up in a couple of years, but would you support investing in private treatment for those who can't afford it?
Absolutely. Treatment is critical, and, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson, last year, I believe, proposed a pilot program that would have provided basically walk-in treatment for free to individuals, and this current council did not pass it. We have got to get treatment into place. We passed the new drug ordinance, and the key provision of that is that people will be diverted into treatment, and we have to have the treatment in place to make that law effective. There are other types of treatment out there. There's medication-assistant treatment, there are lots of clinics in the city that provide that treatment, but we need to work with people who want to be able to get completely clean and sober. We need to invest in that infrastructure.
Cristiana?
You know, as a social service worker, I worked with folks who are literally homeless, who got into permanent supportive housing or other sort of means at the hospital. And, you know, before fentanyl, it was black tar heroin, right before that, it was meth. I've had to literally have clients die from trying to Narcan and then not work. Because I spent that time with them, I know that there needs to be treatment, and there needs to be treatment, similar to with the children, where, folks where they actually will go to, people are afraid of that clinical setting. They, you know, that's why I say we need overdose prevention centers, but we, if someone's afraid they're going to get set to the sixth floor, they won't go. But they would, but I saw so many people go to Food Not Bombs, or People Harm Reduction Alliance, and get help. And so really, at the end of the day, what we need to do is make sure that the people who make these facilities run, the workers, the social workers, the therapists, the outreach workers, that they're funded to scale, because most of those programs are working on a shoestring budget, and people are being paid wages that's not sustainable.
But again, we're looking at a budget shortfall in the next couple of years. How would you, this is a question for both of you, how would you pay for this?
Well, if we're looking at it from a crisis perspective, I know that federally, there's, you know, depending on what's going to happen federally, we never know with them, right? There's going to be pots of money, whether it's through, you know, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Foundation, whether it's through even some of the housing bills, if they have intersectional disabilities or chronic illnesses, there's funds for that programmatic and service piece of it. And so there are, you know, the Coalition to End Homelessness said to increase in the housing, for emergency housing, the programmatic space, so they can hire more people.
Okay. Kathy, how would we pay for this?
Well, that's a good question. So one of the things that we do have are the opioid settlement monies from the state, and I want to say, I'm very proud to say that I actually, the Pharma Purdue case came before me as a judge. I was the one that upheld the decision that allowed for it to go on and become a monumental multi-dollar settlement. So we have state opioid monies, you can also, and we also have federal monies. You know, I think we should look at what King County does. King County has a very small sales tax called the MIDD, and they designate that very small percentage of the sales tax to dealing with mental, behavioral health and substance use treatment. I think that that's a route that we should also entertain.
Okay. And speaking of the state, the city of Seattle, as you recent, as you know, recently reversed a decision not to criminally charge people for possessing drugs or openly using them, basically adopting the statewide law. So is that fair to the people of Seattle and those struggling with drugs? And if not, what would be your solution? Kathy?
Was it fair to pass the law?
Is that law fair to, to change it to where you can now criminalize drug use and open drug use?
Well, I think the city really had no choice but to codify the state law. I don't think that the city should be in a position of deciding which state laws it's going to enforce and not enforce. I think that's a slippery slope. But I also think that we did, the legislature thought very carefully about that and decided that that does remain an important tool to use in getting people into treatment, and made it very clear that the intent was treatment. So I think it is fair, because we're trying to get people well.
Okay. Cristiana?
You know, it, it just feels a lot like the war on drugs, which we know empirically it was unsuccessful. I do feel that there, that bill could have been written in a different way, where it was providing those alternative services and funding things that we know work instead of this. In addition to that, going back to SPD being sort of overburdened and overloaded, it's asking them to do even more by being the people who are assessing folks on the street. So I feel like it's try, it's overloading a system that's already in, in crisis, and we need to have some transformative and innovative solutions here.
Okay. Let's move on to homelessness, because that's an issue that's affecting every major U.S. city, and Seattle is certainly no exception. Angela King has more on that topic.
Yes, and we'll take a look at the numbers in Seattle specifically here in just a minute. But let's talk about an issue that is facing every community, and District 5 is no exception. Communities specifically like Bitter Lake here in District 5 have dealt with encampments popping up, including one near Broadview Thompson K-8 that was cleared a couple of years. years ago. A lot of controversy surrounding that process and how it was handled. But Christiana, I ask you first, do you approve of the city's use of encampment sweeps? And do you think specific areas should be set aside for encampments?
I believe that we need to increase tiny home villages. If you look at the Countess Sin reports across the years, over 95% with variants across the years have said they would take tiny home villages as shelter, and they would go there immediately. But as someone who's worked in shelters, folks outside are also afraid of shelters too, right? And so no one should be outside, absolutely no one. But the fact of the matter is, when you do the sweep, not only is it traumatic, but also they just go across the street. Because the real bottleneck here is that we don't have the shelters and the housing for folks to go. So if we are working double time in a both-and, what can we do innovatively, whether it's, you know, with the motel voucher program or other sort of things that we've used in the past, while we're building these tiny home villages and seeing what happens with the social housing PDA, so we can try to just stop the glut and move that blockage forward?
So again, are you against?
I am 100% against encampments, yes. I don't, it's
Against encampments or sweeps?
The sweeps, the encampment sweeps. I mean, at this point, if they need to have folks in a specific area, I would just make sure that it wasn't an area that would be, that would be harmful in other ways to the folks who'd be living there. Because they are also humans, too.
We are all a community. Kathy, question to you, same question.
So I do support Mayor Harrell's approach. His administration's approach is to do outreach, to offer services, and to offer shelter. Where I, and they have worked very well with the Unified Care Team, and they have also, through the Regional Homelessness Authority, contracted with Just Cause, which is the PDA group that also does lead and co-lead. And they very successfully resolved the encampments at Ballard Commons. So I think it is a model that works. But we have to be very clear that it is not humane or safe to have people residing in tents on the sidewalk, in parks, and in greenways. And I think that the city needs to be more proactive. So right now, to deal with the issue, you have to file so many find-it, fix-it, and somebody has to be shot, or there has to be a fire before anything is done. As soon as a tent shows up, as soon as an RV is there, we get a community service officer out there. We get somebody from Just Cause. We get somebody, a social worker, who can deal with the issues and get somebody into shelter and house.
Okay. Kathy, you mentioned the King County Regional Homelessness Authority just now. And according to HUD's annual homelessness assessment in 2022, Seattle-King County was third in the nation for having the highest homelessness rate. We were only behind Los Angeles and New York. King County Regional Homelessness Authority was created in 2021 to help fix what was considered a fragmented system, but the agency has come under fire. It has faced a lot of criticism here of late. The first question to Q. Again, Kathy, what do you think the King County Regional Homelessness Authority has gotten right, and what do you think still needs addressing?
So I think the one thing that they did get right, and I think most people would agree, is that during COVID, they were very efficient at getting COVID monies out to people and make, in the form of rental assistance. And they were very effective in helping people stay housed and not become homeless. And that is critically important. It is easier, more important, not more important, it's easier to keep people housed than it is to try to rehouse people. What they have not done right is made a lot of obstacles to getting into shelter and a lot of mismanagement.
Okay. Christiana, the same question. What has the King County Regional Homelessness Authority gotten right and what still needs to be corrected?
I think that the approaches and some of the pilots that they've had has definitely shown a promising success. They've also started an amazing database where they're starting to really see who is in need and how you can connect them with housing that makes sense, which as someone who was in the beginning of the coordinated entry, that's a huge win. But we also have to remember, this homelessness crisis didn't start in the last, the last two years. KCR, this King County Regional Housing Authority has only been into existence for two years, so.
You're out of time.
That's time. Thank you.
And that's going to lead us right into our next topic, which is affordable housing. And you both cite affordability as one of your top issues here. So nearly 2/3 of the Seattle area's youngest renters, we're talking about Gen Z, spend at least 30% of their income on rent, according to the latest U.S. Census data. What would you do to make Seattle more affordable? Kathy, or Kathy, let's go to you first.
Well, we definitely need to build more housing. We have a housing supply issue, and we certainly have an affordable housing supply issue. Unfortunately, it's going to take 40 years of pretty constant building to get to the point where we have naturally affordable housing. So we have to look at how do we create affordable housing. I would go back and revisit the mandatory, and where we really need the housing is in the 50% to 80% area median income. That's workforce housing. We need to go back and relook at the mandatory housing affordability ordinance and require that there be more onsite housing put in rather than in-lu funding, because there's a four- to five-year lag from the in-lu funding to actual putting housing in place. We need to look at extending rental subsidies through perhaps increasing the jumpstart tax, and looking at tax exemptions and expanding them out to, property tax exemption, expanding them out to 50 years rather than 12 for subsidized rent.
Christiana?
Yeah, so to continue with the statistics, right, that the average one-bedroom apartment in the city is about $1,600. You would have to make about $70,000 a year to have the three times the income to even qualify for that. And most folks, when they're just coming out of college and their career, is not going to make that amount. Not to mention that the average apartment in the city is 500 square feet, and it's a studio or one-bedroom. So what happens if you get married? What happens if you have a family, right? And so that really drives up the price. We really need to, I think the social housing PDA is going to really perhaps help because that's going to be based on income in a way that otherwise was restricted based on HUD or federal guidelines that makes it lower. But especially if we're talking in the $70,000 range and higher, when you have a family, even if you are making area median income, the housing right now is really terrible. So I think that we need to look at what's going on with the prices and make sure that we are able to have a market that's affordable.
Well, Christiana, you talk about affordability and what it would cost to rent an apartment. Would you lobby the state to legalize rent control? And if that happened, what kind of policies would you put into place?
I would definitely think that we need to do something. So I wouldn't say it would only be rent control or rent stabilization perhaps, but I definitely would say we have to do something. One of the first things that we would do is that, you know, we've been hearing about how the larger property management companies are using sort of this internal service where they might sort of be price gouging and driving up that cost. Really looking into that, because if that is happening, we need to break that, you know, sort of essentially antitrust it. So we can see if that can bring down the rents as well.
All right. Kathy, same question.
Would I lobby for the city?
Yes. Do you support rent control? And would you lobby the state for such a measure?
No, I do not support rent control. I think it's been shown, if you just look at San Francisco and New York City, where they both have rent control, it has not resolved the issue of skyrocketing rents. I think that what we do need to do, though, is we have put in place some tenant protections that have been very important in terms of giving tenants a long period of notice when rent is going up, in terms of providing relocation assistance. The city needs to do a better job of connecting landlords to tenants in that instance. And we also need to look at working with small landlords.
All right. And that's, all right. Well, when we talk about affordable housing, the question is, where would it go? And we, here in District 5, there's always the big question right now about the Jackson Park Golf Course. Should that be turned into a green space? Or should that be made available for further housing development? Christiana, I pose a question to you first.
Sure. I think that the biggest conflict I'm hearing about Jackson Park is that it feels inaccessible to people, and that we don't have a lot of land. That's really the biggest scarcity area that we don't have is land, right? And so speaking with Jackson Park for all, that's sort of their, their idea is like, well, here's this big swath of land that we can't really access. Is it a park? And if so, we should access it. If it's not, what would it look like to be able to have that, perhaps have eco-villages or other sorts of green homes?
So you support green space rather than housing development?
You can have both. You can have, you don't have to have one or the other.
Okay. Kathy, I pose the question to you.
Right. So at the moment, housing, a voter initiative was passed, I believe it's Initiative 42, that prohibits housing being built there. It can only be park if you use it for a different use. It has to be the equal use. So basically, it's golf. It has to be golf, or it has to be park. So right now, that would require a voter initiative or a lawsuit. And I don't think that that's
And right now, one is on the table that is being proposed.
Well, we would have to see what happens. But at the moment, it's illegal at the moment. So housing is not an option at this time.
I do have a follow-up. Christiana, this is one of three city-run golf courses that we have. And it also is pretty much packed every day of the week, at least in the spring, summer, and fall, bringing in millions of dollars in revenue. So how do you make up that money if you turn it into green space?
My understanding is, you know, I think that for golf, it's a sport. I know that some of the high schools go and play there. It's not that the entire golf course would go away. But again, we have a crisis for housing, housing that's actually in green spaces. Because just because we have affordable housing, folks want to live in green spaces too. They don't always want to live in concrete, right? And so I think it's really important that we actually see how revenue neutral it is and go from there.
Okay. We want to turn to transit and infrastructure, obviously a big issue in our area as well. And Jake has more on that.
And Northgate Station is poised to be one of the busiest transportation hubs and corridors when it's all complete. Kathy, you live near Northgate. Currently, Council District 5 Councilmember Deborah Juarez says she's proud of her work to reimagine Northgate with the Kraken Ice Plex and the John Lewis Memorial Bridge connecting both sides of I-5. But we've seen at these transit stations, a real problem with crime and violence. Kathy, we'll start with you on this question about Northgate. How can you make that area more appealing for everyone, specifically the transit station?
Well, I think that we, obviously, we need to have, it keeps coming back to, we need to have more police officers. But I also think that if we had community service officers who, that was their particular precinct in which they could be in the neighborhood, we could have, you know, community ambassadors that would be there to greet people, talk to people, really just create a sense that somebody is paying attention. It will be nice when we actually have the development of where the Kraken is, some of that development opens. And so we are bringing more people to the transit station and to the area. So there's more activity and things to do, which I think helps people feel, helps deal with crime and makes people want to be in that space.
Christiana, same question for you about Northgate and the future.
Yeah, so up until last year, I lived pretty much along Roar Avenue from Lipton Springs up to 145th. And the biggest thing that I think is happening with the increase of crime is, the crime is not necessarily increasing. That's always been an area where folks were unhoused, or there was always, you know, something sort of going on. And so what may be happening is that the, you know, sort of that got disrupted. And instead of saying, hey, how can we use this opportunity to provide services to have the transfer, you know, to have new organizations show up at that transit center, we just sort of built it. And so I would love to see, especially a mixed-use development in that space, and have housing, have services, have resources, where there's a third place, not just for, you know, for everyone, all of our neighbors to go. And that can not only be a place for folks to be able to get the help that they need, and to be able to get off of the street, but also for us all to get to know each other and to build a community again.
Sound Transit and Metro both have budget shortfalls. They're finding it difficult to fully staff what they need when it comes to security. As a city council member, would you be able to implement any change or anything to add to the security measures at the Sound Transit?
Yeah, I think that, again, it goes back to, we, the real upstream issue here is the fact that there are so many different industries, so many different areas where folks are underpaid, and they are asking for increases. And they're all the jobs that we really need, social workers, you know, bus drivers, things like that. So what I would do to make sure that we have the security, to have the services, is to make sure that we really are investing in those core root solutions to have wage parity.
All right, let's get into the city budget. We mentioned that there could be as much as a $200, $250 million deficit by 2025. So Angela is going to give you a couple of questions about that.
Yeah, and we could be looking at another $207 million deficit come 2026. So the problem seems to be compiling upon itself. A recent report from the Revenue Stabilization Work Group says Seattle is outpacing tax revenues. So how does the city balance the budget while also maintaining essential services? Or another way to pose that question is, what, can you give us an example of where the city right now could better manage spending? Kathy, I'm going to start with you on this question.
Better management. Well, I think that we do have a lot of duplicative services. We have a lot of outreach that's being done. We have a lot of different nonprofits that the city is funding through contracts, that I think are, many of them are doing the same job. And it would be nice if we could get them to collaborate and consolidate. But I think that what we really need to do, first thing, the next council, is to have a forensic audit as well as a performance audit, so that we actually know where all the money's being spent, what are, where it is in the departments. And the next council is operating from the same set of facts and the same baseline. And then at that point, we are going to actually be able to answer that question. Where are we overspending? Where can we find efficiencies without necessarily having to lay people off, but be, become more efficient and more lean like King County does?
Can you give us an example where these services or organizations' processes are repetitive?
No, truthfully, I can't. I don't, I don't know the details enough. I have a lot of assumptions. And I don't think it's good policy to operate from assumptions. And that's why I think it's important to have the forensic audit done, to be smart and fair about what's being pursued.
All right. Christiana, can you give us an example of where you think the city could better budget its funding?
Sure. So as, you know, I always joke and say I'm a wonk, right? And so I just got done reading this some 90-page budget proposal that was put forth by Mayor and previous ones at that. It's really concerning that around a third of the SPD's budget is in overtime. That goes to show, again, that they are overworked. And really, if we're sitting here, we've talked this entire time about that we don't have enough housing, we don't have enough services, we have folks on the street. The last thing we need to do is to reduce social services. As a matter of fact, I think that there could be a both-and, a win-win here, if we try to make sure that the police are well, and that they're able to really focus on the priority one calls, and to see if there's any sort of like, based on the services, that perhaps we would transfer that purview to folks already doing that work, see what the average cost of that is, and see if that could help with seed funding, as well as making sure that we pass something like a capital gains tax.
Well, you bring up taxes. It sounds like you would support something like that.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, something that I think is really important is that we have the most regressive tax system in the city, and we, I mean, in the state, and the most regressive tax system in the country. And so some of those suggestions from the Revenue Stabilization Task Force, we need to really have a council that's going to go and lobby around the equal taxation clause in our constitution, because we won't be able to even put a tax brackets like we do for our federal taxes in place with that. And if we don't have progressive taxation, we're always going to be behind on revenue.
Thank you. Kathy, do you support raising taxes or implementing new ones to address the city's current budget crisis?
All right. So again, as I said, I think the very first step is to do a forensic audit as well as a performance audit. I think that it really comes down to three things. We need to look at where we can be more efficient. We need to look at how we can expand our tax base. And then we also need to look at how we can generate additional revenue. Those two other steps happen after we have a very clear picture about where we're at, where the spending is happening. Honestly, I don't think we are necessarily going to get there just by tightening our belt. I do think we are going to have to look at progressive revenues.
Okay. In terms of possible revenue sources, Kathy, and I know you say you're not completely decided on whether new taxes should be introduced or not, but would you support a tax on high earners, CEO high-pay ratio tax? earners, a CEO-high-pay ratio tax?
Yes, I think based on what I know at this point, I would, and it would be easily incorporated into the jumpstart tax.
How about a tax on vacant property?
Potentially. The concern I have with that is that there are smaller landowners who have kept their property vacant because of unfavorable laws. And we don't necessarily want to have the unintended consequence of hurting small homeowner, excuse me, small landowners. Larger vacant properties, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to hand it back over to John.
Okay, and we're actually almost out of time. We've made it. Thanks for discussing these important topics, both of you. Again, we're almost out of time, but before we go, we got our lightning round, a very exciting lightning round to bring to you. So these are just yes-or-no questions. I see you have the paddles in your hand. One is a green, thumbs up. The other is an orange, thumbs down. And these are, again, yes-or-no questions. Two minutes on the clock, and we go. Angela first.
Would you support a congestion pricing measure to reduce traffic and air pollution?
Do you support redirecting funds from the police budget to social services and community programs?
Would you support a pilot program to implement a universal basic income measure similar to what Tacoma tried?
Deborah Juarez admitted she was surprised at some of the aspects of the job when she was elected. Do you think you'll understand the job? And if you could also say yes or no as well?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, we didn't make that clear. So not your fault at all.
Do you think your policies would, for the most part, align with Mayor Harrell?
Do you support rent control in Seattle?
And again, say yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, no. If we see another surge in COVID cases, are you in favor of lockdowns or mask mandates and/or mask mandates? Yes to both?
Is Seattle coming back?
I think so, yeah.
Speaking of coming back, should the Sonics and the NBA return to Seattle?
Yes, why are you mad?
Got to throw the Sonics question in, sorry.
Exactly. Should District 5 get another dog park?
Oh, yeah.
All right, dog lovers there.
Bark meat lovers.
Will the Mariners win the World Series by 2030?
Yes, I hope so.
Very optimistic. All right, the last one. The Golden Retriever is Seattle's most popular dog, but is it the best breed?
I have a Yorkie. I can say that, so.
It's actually a trick question, because all breeds are the best and all dogs are the best.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, we're going to give you both 60 seconds now for closing statements. And, Christiana, let's have you go first.
You know, I decided to run, like I said, because there are so many people who I've worked with that called me up between Gluttonous Eating Holiday and the beginning of the year, when the current councilmember said they weren't going to run, and asked me to. And why? Because I do have that track record of success. I do have the community supports, the people who have endorsed me. I've already worked with them to pass policies. And the toolkit that I've built and bring, I've used in other municipalities across the country. I know, and I am confident, that I can not only bring that toolkit to bring change, to bring progress, to bring us together, but also hopefully so that we can build a community, not just in District 5, but I've been here for 13 years now. It's home. And I really want to be able to have a space that has third places, transit, housing, where we all can be in sort of, have those multiple pathways towards shared goals. So thank you, and I humbly ask for your vote.
And Kathy?
Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I got into this race because I have lived in Seattle on and off since I was four years old. I have raised with my husband three sons here, who all went to Seattle Public Schools. I want them to be proud of the city. I want them to be able to live in the city. I have a deeply personal commitment to this city being the best that it can be, being thriving, healthy, and equitable. I have spent the past 30 years of my life devoted to public service. I have served as a public defender. I have served as Chair of the Seattle Human Rights Commission. I served as the interim Seattle City Clerk. And most recently, I served as a King County Superior Court Judge. In all of those roles, I dealt with complicated issues. I had to make tough decisions that affected the daily lives of individuals. This is a very complicated job. We need somebody that can hit the ground running, somebody that has a track record of collaborative, established relationships. I think if you look at my endorsements, it's very clear that all of those respected leadership believe that I'm the person to do the job, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Thanks to both of you for, oh, sorry about that. Thank you both of you for joining us tonight. And a reminder to the folks in the audience and the folks at home, democracy doesn't happen without you and your vote.
And speaking of voting, we are now, what, just about 20, some odd days?
November 7th.
Away from November 7th, so there is still time. When you get your ballot, make sure it is postmarked by Tuesday, November the 7th, or make sure it's in a drop box by 8:00 p.m. that night. And if you're not registered yet or need more information as to how to update your ballot information, not too late. Just go to votewa.gov for more information. Again, thank you to our candidates here tonight. And I think, Jake, your time to cue the moment that everyone's been waiting for.
The moment we've all been waiting for. Let's give it up for our two candidates this evening, Christiana Obi Sumner and Kathy Moore. Thanks to the two of you for being here and giving us some insight into where you stand on the issues. And thank you all so much at home for watching and participating in the program here tonight. We want to thank you all. And from North Seattle College, have a good evening.
And there it is, the fourth and final debate for Seattle City Council. District 5 candidates, Christiana Obi Sumner and Kathy Moore, squared off to see who is a better candidate to lead the district in Seattle's North End. That is the seat being vacated by Seattle City Councilmember Deborah Juarez. They touched on homelessness, crime, leasing, affordable housing, and even taxes. Candidates for Districts 1, 3, and 4 also had debates over the last two weeks. If you missed any of those debates, you can find the full debates on our Connected TV app, along with political roundtables, answering some of the biggest questions about the upcoming election in just a couple of weeks from now. Fox Local app is free to download on Fire TV, Apple TV, Andrew TV, or Roku. Thank you again so much for joining us. Have a good night, and don't forget to vote on November the 7th. For more details on how to register to vote, make sure you visit our website at fox13seattle.com. We'll see you back here in one hour for Fox 13 News at 9. Until then, have a good night.